.............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. Okay, we've approved the minutes of the previous meeting. We have two meetings, one August, or two, July 13th, and the other is August 6th. Uh, okay.
People separating. Goodly, we're not here for them.
Okay, what do the, uh, July 13th first? Is there any additional corrections? I guess I'll just do two minutes. Second, Tom's second. Are there any additions or corrections? Uh, all things are approved in the minutes in, uh, July 13th. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the polls. The minutes are approved. Now we have the, the three, the, uh, the, uh...
Make a motion. Make a motion to accept the minutes from the executive session meeting of, uh, sorry, meeting on, um, August 6th.
Okay, ready? Second. Any additions or corrections? Uh, if not, all things are approved in the minutes. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the polls, the minutes are approved. Uh, we have a visitor tonight, uh, county legislator Manis. I'm sure he has...
Why don't we just take care of this and then shoot, shoot. Karen, Karen goes first.
Okay.
That's all. Thanks.
Maybe she wants to hear what you have to say.
I don't mind you. I don't think so. She did that in ninety-one. That was enough. One year of me is more than enough.
No.
Okay, uh, is there any public comment?
I guess that would be me.
Right, you are.
Yeah. Um, I appreciate the effort. Uh, you got in touch with Lester Taylor, uh, DEC environmentalist officer. He was able to obtain some very colorful DEC signs to put up. Just to let you know, I'm not, he's not sure, and I'm not sure if he physically put them up. It is actually the responsibility of Kimpecks because they own the parking lot to enforce it. So for future reference, they're liable, they're responsible, and, um, counties include somewhere up to five hundred dollars for either way, over five minutes. And if it's a Canadian driver, they're not allowed back in the United States to drive and vice versa. So a very interesting conversation with him. He had said that, uh, if the signs come down, he's got more, and you just ask him for more, and he'll give them to the Kimpecks people to put them up. But we, neither one of us knew if he physically put them up, whether it was the village or...
I put them up.
You did? Well, thank you very much.
Here's, uh, four of the heavy plastic ones that they gave us, and I ordered two, and they're on metal poles on each end of the driveway.
Yeah.
So there's a total of five out there.
Looks very nice. I really appreciate it. Yeah. Thank you, folks.
Took a couple of weeks waiting. The signs came in right away, but the posts...
But the posts in it, which is understandable. You can't put that just at a...
And you just can't pound the poles in the ground up there.
No.
You have to do U F P O because of gas.
Oh, I didn't know that. Okay. So I appreciate your efforts. Very nice, and, uh, between yourself and Officer Taylor, it was taken care of, so thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Very good. Thanks.
Yeah.
It works. Glad that you... We're happy.
Yes. Nobody's part of our science. It seems to work. Thank you.
Uh, there you go. I guess now we're more the county legislator than the mayor.
Last time I was here, we had talked about the firefighters' legislation. I typed up something for all the boards, and I guess I had talked about it to you first, but did not pass this out. So it's just something, it explains a little bit more of what the legislation is. Again, you're not going to have to do anything on the issue until you end up finding out from the county if the legislation passes at the state level. So, you know, it's, it's kind of, it's out there. It's something that I, I feel strongly about. I'm hoping that the state, uh, nothing got passed by the, the Senate because of the impotence of, you know, the entire operation. It was just...
Did nicely.
We, we were, we made the national news. New York State made the national news on that. So anyway, uh, so I have no idea when it's going to be, but as soon as it is, you'll either hear from me. I'm, I'm trying to be on every other month's cycle with all my boards, so, you know, if it falls in the off month, I'll call you or say, you know, the legislation passed. You can do with it what you choose to. Again, my methodology, just so you understand it, is to try and get local support at the village and the town level, and if we do that, then all of us go to a school board meeting and see what we can do because that's the twenty dollar piece of the thirty dollars a thousand. So we're, the, the towns and the villages make up about ten dollars a thousand, uh, for the firefighters, but the school alone is twenty. So, but if we get a bandwagon effect going where all the villages and the town go ahead and offer, it's only a ten percent reduction. And if we do that, then, you know, it would put a little more impetus and potentially pressure on the school to make it unanimous, and then it would be a nice savings for other firefighters and their employees. So, uh, just, I pass that up for, and we, we had talked about it before, pass it out to the other boards, but not to yours. Let me comment on, on what you saw in the paper, which was me flipping a coin. They had to have, we have a seven to three majority Republican to Democrat, and this is the first time that I've ever seen politics rear its ugly head. It had to be Dwight Eisenhower on the coin. I was rooting for John Kennedy, but it had to be Dwight Eisenhower, so I flipped it anyway. But that's, and if that's the only piece of, of partisanship in, in four years, it will be fantastic, and I would expect the title to go. So there'll be two items on the ballot. One, I have no position on at all. It is to eliminate term limits. They started in ninety-six. Uh, because everybody tells me, and you may remember, I do not because I wasn't actively involved, it was a very partisan county board, and so they wanted to get rid of, uh, people after a certain amount of time. We have a very good board. I don't think that's an issue that should weigh in it. Uh, there are two people who are term limited, Sam Trombley from Ellenberg and Keith Defy from Scotter Falls. They would not be able to run unless this passed. The second piece of legislation I do feel very strongly about, and that is staggering the terms, as you do in the villages and the town. It makes absolutely no sense to elect all ten legislators at the same time, potentially they have a bunch of them term limited, uh, some choosing not to run, and some defeated, and you might end up with one or two legislators. I mean, if, if the rule is becoming one of throw the incumbents out, which it sounds like there is a sentiment out there just to say regardless of who you are and what you've done, you know, we, you know, in New York State, we want to throw you out if that should happen. I don't think the results would be good at the county level. So, in any event, this area drew the four-year slot. So Sam won the toss, thought he won and got the four-year slot, but because he won, the even numbers all ended up with the two-year slot and the odd numbers, and we're area one up here. We ended up with, uh, the four-year slot. So, in any event, those are two items which will be on the ballot in the fall. Uh, you know, I don't know. I, I, I do intend to go out and work for the second one. The first one is kind of, I guess it's philosophical on, on everybody's part in terms of if you think term limits are a good idea, then you should, uh, vote no and, and leave them. If you think that, you know, they may be applicable more at the state and federal level, then, you know, you might want to consider, uh, looking at them. The press Republican has come out, they already did an editorial, which was in favor of abolishing. They think that people should have a right to choose who they want to choose and not the term limit. Sam promises me that people get ninety-eight percent of the people in Ellenberg to support the resolution, so, um, and, and that, that may well be true, whether that law set, the other group, I don't know. Okay, two more quick items. I attended a meeting in Canton. Um, the, uh, as you probably know, the, uh, and we're, we're starting to call it the rooftop highway again. Um, there was a meeting out there, actually, um, and, uh, the, the people that voted initially to accept the premise, this is the highway that run from, potentially from Watertown all the way over here to Champlain, um, decided that they didn't like what they voted for, which was basically a three-lane road in some places. They decided that since the Obama administration was spending hundreds of billions of dollars, why couldn't they spend it and build interstate? I think it was ninety-four. I think that actually is a number. And, um, why can't they build it, which would obviously impact this area because all the plans, I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at them, but, uh, the plans for this area had it going along Route Eleven. This would have to be new designated areas for an interstate highway, you know, just like, and my, my only concern would be that, uh, and I think it does impact you guys, if they should swing it south in Ellenberg, I think that would not be good for our area. So I need to do everything in my power to make sure that they, at least, if they want to want to spur from Ellenberg down to Plattsburg, that's fine, but this needs to come right over, and it needs to work in conjunction with Vermont so that you can go right over the bridge and right over to Swanton. And actually, the, the one, the plan that I saw goes all the way up to Main, so it's part of a, an initiative. Yes, it goes all the way across. We're talking about, it, it was six billion was mentioned as a figure to make three lanes in all of the areas on Route Eleven and, and do a few bypasses, which would, uh, where you can't, where it's hard to pass and so on. Your guess is as good as mine, what the figure would be to put an interstate in, plus northern part of the state. I mean, but it, it, there's a lot of jobs. One of the keys will be to make New York State make it into a priority. That's what has to happen. And our little committee reversed itself and changed its vote, and, uh, I, I was not involved in the first vote, but the second vote, it seemed to be the consensus. Why not do, why not go for the whole enchilada first and see if we can get this interstate, see if we can get it built, see if Kristen Jo Brand seems to be committed to it? Uh, why can't we take a shot at that? She's found a hundred and sixty-eight million dollars, uh, to begin a process, which is going to be at minimum thirty to forty billion, I would say. Anyway, so, in any event, that's where we are on it, and I, it was a, it was a pretty productive meeting. It was not unanimous. Uh, there were people who believed that we should go for what we think we can get, which are three lanes. It doesn't really impact too much up here. Uh, it would over, it would bypass Ross's Point, actually, it would go through, uh, just between the golf course and Ross's Point and then out. Anyway, but where an interstate would go, I have no idea. I haven't done plans yet, it was up. And a hundred and sixty-eight million, like, ish of plants. I may, I don't even know that, so. So anyway, but I want to report on it because it is a major change in terms of philosophy. Okay, uh, the last thing quickly, um, I had talked to you at some length about the Mosaic project, and I just wanted to bring it up one more time and, and mention it to you because we are doing the unveiling. There were a lot of Champlain students that were involved, the entire seventh grade at Northeast Clinton was involved, and, um, it, it is, it is just unbelievable to see what they came up with. It is truly a work of art. It is history. It is a personification of our heritage, and the unveiling is, uh, Wednesday at five-thirty. So I, I just, I just thought I would mention it to you again because there's so many local students that are involved. We expect to have, um, you know, a couple of hundred people from the area, parents, grandparents, and so on, uh, but even if you can't make that, it's just, it takes it right from, and, and this area, as I think I mentioned earlier, was given the designation because this is where Champlain actually walked, in theory. Uh, you know, we, we are the Champlain part of it, so, and that is one of the biggest parts of it, is Champlain and a boat and so on. Maybe you saw, I don't know if you had some of it on, on the news, but, uh, it's right on the, uh, in the parking area of the government center, and, uh, it'll be, it'll be quite, quite something to see, and there'll be interpretive panels that will come up later and so on, but it's really, it's impressive, and the fact that the entire county, every school participated, uh, you know, and it should last as long or longer than a building, I just think is a testament to, it was certainly not in any way, uh, you know, my idea, but it was something that when I first heard about it, I decided that it was something that I really wanted to get behind because you can't get anything better than involving young people in local history. To me, that's just, that, that's where it is. You know, free artists that helped out and, and so on, it's, it's really something. So, in any event, if there's anything, again, uh, you know, anything that you need from me, just call me. I, I'm here to help you guys if I can, and, uh, I'll see you, you know, I guess two months. I'm going to try and make the area, okay? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, how'd the report from Lake Pedro?
Well, it's been a quiet month. I was on vacation for a week, but, uh, most of the letters I sent out for the grass, I believe they've all cut the grass. We had one person that was requesting a trial, so you'll have to tell me how you want to handle this part of the trial. We would like... Other than that, uh...
That's on, on mowing the grass?
No, this was a garbage issue. I went to, it was one of the tickets and I, or citations I wrote, I went to the local court, and they're requesting a trial, so we have to have some representation there. But they definitely told me why. Um, and the trial date has been set for the twentieth, and we asked for a postponement, which is in two weeks. I was informed of that today.
Who does it go in front of? Town?
Yeah. It's a bench trial. Other than that, uh, the building downtown, that's finally, actually, that got cleaned up while I was out.
That's wonderful. Like to have a good owner.
The only other issue with the former owner of that property is the building on the back. I don't know what the board wants to do with that. I believe she's in a nursing home now, and the county doesn't have it for taxes, that I'm aware of.
Which building is that?
Uh, it's a weird... Yeah, it's a white building on the back, but, you know...
Green, the green one?
Yeah.
The green one?
It was Mrs. D's.
Oh, I thought all three sold them, yeah.
No, just the two. So there's still the one, but, I mean, either the village has to go in there and clean it up if you want it cleaned up, or, or contract it out and put it on the taxes, or wait a year, and I believe that, I mean, it might be on the taxes next year, then it will be sold let out soon, but... So you'll have to let me know what you want to do with that. Other than that, I'm just working on a couple other property maintenance issues and whatever comes up. Uh, we do have a public hearing Wednesday night for the zoning board for former acre motor freight, their business that's going to be paying the Nova Buses, which is where they go on the grid. Matt Ware is promising me thirty to forty jobs.
Awesome.
I'm going to home to it.
Now, what's happening with the main knitting building?
Uh, the main knitting, uh, I guess that's the negotiation as to what's going to happen in there. The sign on the corner, I don't know how the hell it happened, but miraculously, all that brush got cut.
Very good.
Two, three days after we started looking into who owned the sign.
They had a contractor appear during that.
Yeah, but they didn't cut the, all the hay field though. You know, so, I don't know if you want me to contact the Area Development Corporation to find out if they're going to cut that, or are they going to say the village cuts it, or, I mean, I, I don't know who owns it as well. It should be cut. It's all going to weeds. I mean, if it was hay, it'd be one thing, this is what I call noxious weeds, you know? I personally think it should be cut, so. I've got a contact down there. I'll try him tomorrow, see what I can get out of that, so that's my last big track of land trying to get cut, and if you have questions for me?
Well, can you list of the situations for grass, is it eleven thirty-eight, May twenty?
Eleven thirty-eight, yeah.
Right down here on the corner?
No, 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 in the middle, that's, that's, that's...
Oh, right, right over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that's going to be a court case. That's about the fourth time I sent him letters. Yeah, no, that, that's a special one, yeah.
For, it's a legal mess, correct?
The twentieth.
August twenty?
August twentieth at two o'clock, yeah.
So who, who, who are we going to, going to court for that?
Yeah. But usually what happens is the village or whoever, I mean, I'm not sure if Mr. Marshall is going to represent the village in this, or we have to find another attorney. I don't feel comfortable going there by myself, if, if the opposition has an attorney. If it doesn't work.
Okay, we'll listen to, uh... Well, thanks, thanks for making the report. Now I have a mayor's report. Uh, I just wanted, I mean, I've not even begun to attempt to thank everyone who worked on and helped with the union levy this past Saturday, but it was a great job, like, uh, congratulations goes out to everybody, thanks to all the attendees who came out and made the day a success. It was a great event for everybody. We got perfect weather, which was unusual this year, so somebody, somebody was watching out for us. And I, I just wanted to, uh, thank everyone that participated. It was a very good event, and I'm sure you, 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 lots of comments also on the area. And the other, uh, thing I want to comment on was, uh, the village crew did a great job in prepping the village, making sure the guys don't worry, that we appreciate we only had three people, they did a great job with what they had, what they're able to do. And contrary to what people might put in speak out, the village does very good, good job for it. Actually, I do. Good job. Uh, it was all I had, Greg?
I'd like to echo the mayor's, congratulations to all the organizers and volunteers who were part of the very successful Village Fest on Saturday. Uh, I don't know if we have an exact number of attendees, but it was, it was a huge event. Everyone seemed to have a very enjoyable day with the food, the music, storytellers, rides, and many other organized events enjoyed by all those attending. Had a shared services meeting on July twenty-second with Don Fletcher from Barton and Judas. Studies moving forward with water and wastewater issues being examined, including potential growth prospects for the area. Leak detection of the water system should be completed by the end of this month. Provide alternative options for solving problems with water hardness and water pressure issues on Prospect Street, and hopefully the final report for Shared Services Asset Management Plan should be completed by the end of the year. Next meeting for Shared Services is August twenty-sixth, five P M, here in the village office. Public is more than welcome, and I'm encouraged to attend. Waste water plan is running smoothly and effectively. Issues that exist are being addressed and rectified to maintain functionality of the plan. I'd like to thank Bob Jewell for his efforts at the wastewater plan. A second reminder to the village residents, please dispose of cooking oils and grease properly. Also, waste oil, waste oil removal from businesses must be handled and documented properly. Oils, grease should not be put into the wastewater system. It is very hard on our system. On a more serious note, we are asking for help from the village residents. The village has had a number of street signs stolen over the past few weeks. Oak, Elm, Maple, Chestnut, Prospect, Hunter Net street signs have been stolen. This presents a potential problem for fire departments, emergency services, and police response in any type of emergency. Any information provided would be very helpful in stopping this potentially harmful and very expensive situation. Please call the village office at two nine eight four one five two with any information in regards to this matter. I would also like to give my congratulations to the DPW crew putting up the new signs, preparing streets and the park for the quad party, getting the paving done for South Elm Streets, Larry and Jimmy getting their contact hours for small water systems management, Terry Lindcourt for his diligent work at the wastewater plant, Jimmy and Larry as well. We have a small crew, as stated by the mayor, we have a small crew that's doing a great job here in the village under somewhat trying conditions, weather, et cetera. I would ask that if anyone has any issues with the crew and the work being done, please attend a board meeting and let us, let the board know of your concerns, and let us handle it in person. Thank you.
Very good report, Greg. Thanks.
The teacher's voice.
Trustee Trombley? Good point.
Thank you. Uh, nice job, Greg. It's good to talk back to follow. I echo Greg's sentiments and hard work he's been doing, and, uh, what you said, yeah, I agree completely. These guys are three men trying to take care of a wastewater, any water plant, and take care of streets. They've done a great job. I want to comment just quickly on the, on the quad celebration, Religious Day, I have a second. It was a wonderful event. We had a packed house at the KFC, church, the school, and, uh, that was a community event as well, and we had folks from, from all over attending, from Milan, from Athens, and people from France that were all. Um, then last weekend, the youth of the weather, I mean, I'm not sure if we were, but they did a great job. Nice job.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, it went, it went very, very well, and I want to echo their comments as well. Thank you for all the preparation today's day. I mean, I needed power down there in the holes, and the other guys came through and they, they got power installed for it. I really needed a full dug the plant tree, and it's taken care of, so thank you very much. I know, I know you guys are busy. Um, and the, the tree, by the way, that was planted down there is a, is a red maple of Prince and King, and it's hopefully going to last for years in the near future. So we've got a nice, uh, monument plaque, uh, which is, you know, stayed in the form, so glad to see some kind of, well, I guess, like, planted. And I just want to say thanks to everybody that, that came out to help. I mean, we had, you know, Bruce, I was in, serving hot dogs in the street forum, we had town, you know, the Ellen team doing the forum, we had, uh, town councilmen, those trustees, uh, third drivers, and they were from Ross's Point, was there, it was a, it was a great, uh, shared function, I want to, I want to call it, okay? And, uh, that's all I have to say is, you know, thanks for helping out.
Well, Stink's going last. Ditto, 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 ditto.
That's coming in first order.
As you know, this process started well over a year ago with meetings that we began, um, planning all of these events, and at first we were a very small crew, um, and in the end we did grow. Everyone came together, as this community is notorious for doing. Um, I state that every year after the bazaar, how amazed and thankful I am for the number of people that step up to the plate and make this community such a beautiful place that it is. There were people moved in that church service to tears. I personally thought, oh my gosh, the whole mass and friends, shoot me now. It was beautiful, it was absolutely spectacular, and people were moved because that's what they remember from their childhood, and it was just awesome to see, and all the positive comments, and everybody coming together as one, and not a division, you know, between the town and the village and Ross's Point, and we need more and more of that, and after Saturday, it was just more and more comments, we need a village-wide fest. Today, playing cards with the ladies, they're from all over up here, and it was general consensus that, wow, we need this, we need this every year, and I think that we need to make it a priority, I would like to see the town make it a priority, I'd like to see Ross's Point make it a priority, that we all pool our resources, a minimal amount of money every year to make this event happen. That village park is phenomenal, I mean, we have an unbelievable gold mine down there as far as a jeweled piece of property to hold this event. You know, as we were planning this and coming up with one tent after the other, I'm thinking, guys, where are you gonna put all these tents? You know, there's not that much space down there. Well, there is, and it is beautiful, and again, you know, the shorelines were just so nice to have cleaned up, and the Knights of Columbus did a phenomenal job cleaning up behind their place, and, you know, you walk down Elm Street and you can see the river instead of weeds and overgrown saplings, you know, it, it just was so cool to see, and not one negative comment on the whole event, and it looks like there were well over 600 people at this event, well over. You know, the historical center, Samuel D. Champlain Museum, if you didn't get a chance to get in there, which I didn't unfortunately, I got in and the end is there taking all down, the connection of famous people to our area is staggering. You know, there's so much information, and Celine Hotket has done a wonderful job in there, and we need to support her and support everyone who has made this function such a success. A huge thanks to Chris Trombley, I hate mentioning names, but we have to put that out there, without his leadership, this event would not have come off. Everyone does do their part, there's no question about it, but without someone at the, the head guiding, getting the meetings scheduled, making things work, sending out the meetings, you know, rescheduling, calling, begging, things wouldn't happen. We then had Bruce and Jane West step up and took over Community Day, and what an unbelievable day, for those of you who did not make it, check out all the photographs that were taken and films from videotaping, Calvin is there, so we should have some great coverage on, on the whole event. So, and of course also to Celine, who was instrumental statewide with this event, and without her leadership and push for a lot of the grants, we are very successful in writing grants and getting grants for our area, and we darn well should have been, we are Champlain, and, you know, proud to be part of, very, very proud to be part of it, it is an awesome, awesome community. So, thank you to everyone, everyone that was involved. There was also a coloring contest, and I am embarrassed and ashamed to say, kids, I left the winners at home, and I know I promised to announce it tonight, so I'll announce it at next month's meeting, so you can hear your name on, on air, but we had age groups from four on up to 18, and we had 46 participants. It was phenomenal, to see these pictures that the kids did, I even had four-year-olds to do the, they colored the difficult picture of Samuel D. Champlain in his boat with the Indians, and we had two of them do a very difficult picture, and they ended up winning, so, it was really kind of amazing that they took on the more difficult picture and did a very nice job of it. So, it was a phenomenal event, and again, you know, folks, every day we piss and moan of the little things that go wrong, and we need to focus on all the wonderful things that go on right in this community, because we have one hell of an awesome community. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, well said. Okay, we'll now have the reports, Secretary.
Everybody has their expense revenue reports for July.
Okay, we have one purchase requisition for a Dell computer for Mickey, for $500,000. She's been on the motion to...
Night off.
Hi.
The motion group, the purchase of a computer.
Motion to approve the second, second, second dollar.
Might want to mention the pole also.
Okay, yeah, that's... Okay, we have a second, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Justin Martin?
Aye.
Justin Johnson?
Aye.
Justin Gary?
Aye.
At this time, we have a motion to approve the award, continue.
We have two, two invoices to add. We have one for Aaron Sorel for our website updates, for $60 to be taken out of code 1410.4, and we have to add Bob Jewell for his, for his work, the amount of, is $1,003.75 for 10 days.
He doesn't want to donate this time?
And that's come out of G8130.1.
Well, it's because he's from Placso.
He's in, he's used...
We have a motion to approve the award.
I make motion to approve the award, confirm.
Second?
Second.
Uh, is there a discussion? Your thought, Justin Martin?
Aye.
Justin Johnson?
Aye.
Justin Gary?
Aye.
Okay, we'll now have the report, Superintendent, Larry will be giving that.
I made up a list of things that we've done around the village and stuff. Here's a, on the pavement, I had estimated a, I have $34,000 on here, but I had looked $37,800. I think that we still have to gravel alongside the roads. I know people in college, I mean, but tomorrow, if everything goes all right, the town's gonna give us a hand with their type of roadside machine, and they're, and they're gonna, we're gonna use a white stone, so, so that should be done tomorrow, and then they have their pylon to return. I was gonna say, we, we put up the signs on the street, this is the third time that these signs up. We also had the pylons taken, didn't find that. Did the regular tests for the water and the wastewater for the month of July. Passed the holes on Elm Street, repaired the great bottom of Prospect Street, the great test left it, so, we took it apart, we submitted that, had that all taken care of before. The muffin monster was pulled and shipped out on Friday, and we put the C around down around the, the park with the plastic pipe around the trees.
Yeah, that's nice.
Because it was black, and they were hitting all the trees, and...
Smart.
Another thing is, myself, I like to thank the town of Champlain and the county for helping us out, and our village crew, we did the asphalt, it was hot, we got it done. If your patience was to come more days, it'll look even better.
Thanks, Eric. Now, have you corresponded?
Yes, I sure do.
Brace yourself, it's long, folks.
Oh, one more thing on, on the note, when we had this internal day the other day, I went down and took pictures all over, I also went in the museum and took pictures, so, Aaron's gonna uphold them on the village website, if people want to get on or get pictures of all this stuff.
Does she want more, 'cause I took a ton too.
Yeah, we gotta finish them.
I'll send them to her.
Send them to us, and still, still put them on, even if you have a video, you can download video.
So, for symbol, we should...
Okay.
There's a good one.
Correspondence from U.S. Genealogy Geological Survey regarding the recent finagle number two as part of their certain study with the New York State D.C., the groundwater quality in the Lake Champlain Basin. Correspondence from Clinton County Department of Personnel regarding the 2009 payroll certification. Correspondence from Clinton County Highway Department regarding contract to supply and deliver roadside.
Everyone's on vacation.
I have nothing to do with real business. Your new business, we have a resolution regarding real property tax, Greg?
Mayor, under older business, your village policies are still not approved yet.
Which ones? That we had done on the last...
It's your current policy, but there's four, like, four, the only one that you, that you approved was the personnel policy, which we had changed last month, but the other ones are still on hold, and basically it's, nothing was changed, it's just a kind of a housekeeping that would do with the annual meeting, but it was tabled.
Okay, what were the four that you had, uh?
Uh, there's procurement policy, that's purchasing policy, I'll have, look, I mean, I didn't have that up top, I mean, that's...
I don't think anybody had any changes, so we can prove it from the...
Basically, there's not usually any changes, you know, it's just a housekeeping, just the personnel policy that you change, it's on. I think Tom had mentioned that you had, you remember getting them and what we're doing.
He could give us the list, if you want, on that, Mike, then.
Hey, who we got here?
Reader the resolution, please.
Can we read it?
Ready, fine.
Resolution, real property tax correction, Doris Picard Life Estate, August 10th, 2009, Gordon. Whereas the property located at 51 Ashline Drive, Champlain, New York, with tax map number 18.2-4-24, is owned by Doris Picard Life Estate, and whereas the Village of Champlain has been notified by Clinton County Real Property Office that section 550, subparagraph two, paragraph C of real property tax law states an incorrect entry of assessed valuation on an assessment rule or on a tax rule for a parcel, which except for a failure on the part of the assessor to act on a partial exemption, would be eligible for such partial exemptions, constitutes a clerical error, and whereas in this particular case, parcel 18.2-4-24 should have received an aged exemption on the 2009 village tax rule. Now therefore, be it resolved at the Village of Champlain Board of Trustees at their regular meeting held on Monday, August 10th, 2009. Hereby approves this correction and approves the aged exemption for parcel 18.2-4-24, Doris Picard Life Estate, located at 51 Ashline Drive, Champlain, New York, with the motion being made by?
Strong.
By Greg Martin, and seconded by?
I'll second.
And carried unanimously, State of New York, County of Clinton, certification.
Okay, Justin Martin?
Aye.
Justin Johnson?
Aye.
Justin Gary?
Aye.
The award, aye? Okay, resolution is carried.
Please just want to know what the...
Yes.
The board reviewed the investment policy, procurement policy, Teamsters Union contract, personnel policy, and rules and procedures for public meetings.
So, really, the...
The Teamsters wouldn't be a change.
Yeah, that's...
Yeah. The personnel policy, you may change it, too.
So, I get, so procurement, investment, and...
Rules, procedure, yeah.
Okay, so, the portion, can we prove those as we have them?
Motion to approve the... Procurement, investment, rules, procedure.
Yeah, we don't...
We don't accept it.
No.
You can't change it.
It's already, it's already been accepted. Okay.
Second.
Second, we need, any discussion? Thought, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
For holes, motion is carried. Uh, we have one other item, Ascendonica State Archive Retention Workshop in, is it Fort Edward?
Well, Ascendonica, yeah.
And that's a one-day session, I believe.
Right, no charge, just tribal expense.
Make a motion to approve that.
Sorry.
Second. Uh, is there a discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye. For holes, motion is carried.
Like, is there a vault down here where they serve records, where they store records? Yep, it's quite large. Actually, there's two, one in the court.